We're going to call and order this meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. If everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we do have the agendas presented. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members or department heads at this time? No changes. The agenda will stand as presented. We have nothing under the sheriff's report or the detective's report, so that starts us right out at unfinished business. And turn that over to Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to amend Resolution Number 14-235 to increase the amount from 16,000 to 17,500 for the purchase of additional equipment for the 2015 Ford Explorer Interceptor Cruiser from various vendors to be paid from Fund 01G02.
Second discussion.
Lisa, what equipment are we talking about here?
Well, there's some multiple equipment. There's backup sensors. There are Bluetooth capability now because for some reason this one and you'll see our other 2014s didn't have those in. We're swapping out the seat to have that.
Is that another we re- we called out?
Well, yeah, this one, we're swapping out the seat. The other ones are different. And there's another 14 on the next resolution swapping out that backseat. Also that trunk box, is that what you call it? And then there were just a few additional items that just weren't included originally.
I'm sorry, you said trunk box, did that one was on top?
Yes.
But if they're able to pull out, but they're.
Which one? Which one's rolling yet?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then item number two is a resolution to amend Resolution 14-085 to increase the amount from 30,000 to 35,000 for the purchase of additional equipment for the two 2014 Ford Explorers from Fund 01G02.
I will so move.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Again, it's on one of the vehicles. It's the new backseat. One of them had it. It's the rollout. It's the backup sensor, sensors. It's the Bluetooth and then just a couple of other additional items.
Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And that's the end of unfinished business.
Nothing under new business. It's going to take us to the fiscal officer's report. Mr. Flax?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment of a penny warrant to the amount $435,418.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the payment of the regular payable in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
So move. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following medical claims as provided by healthcare.
I will so move. Very good.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four is the investment report.
This is just the financial report.
I'm sorry.
Report. Start shopping. Start shopping. Probably next month, next month on that.
It'll probably be about halfway through to check, start checking when it's getting closer to the 20th. Fiscal Officer Number Five is a request for a resolution to set a hearing for the United District for Lexington Falls Number Five. It's part of the new allotment. It's all one of them.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And then Fiscal Officer Number Six is a request for a resolution to authorize the following transfers.
I will so move.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And that'll conclude the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Flax. It's going to take us to the fire department and I'm going to turn that over to Deputy Chief Schallerberger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item one is to authorize the purchase of one something customized pumper on state bid not to exceed $436,077.
I will so move on Fire One. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number two is the purchase of payment of Motorola radio, 800 Portmanteers radio. And this thing is hardware not to exceed $3,786.50.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number three is authorized purchase of Firecom radio headsets, controllers, and this thing is hardware from Firecom not to exceed $6,000.
I'll so move.
Second.
Discussion. Chuck, just clarification. What's that?
The Firecom radio system is a headset system for inside the cabin truck. They're wireless, cuts down noise from outside and people hear radio communications. And we do, that'd be for the new truck. There's two of them going in there. And then we have one that's broke that we're going to replace. And then one for the rear of the truck, the additional firefight.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Item number four is the job announcement. Just want to make you aware that we did post that. We established an eligibility list for hiring. It was posted at all the hospitals, Stark State, and to Stark County Fire Chiefs. So we have until the end of October to place their application in.
Yeah, I was thinking, I need to establish that because of the potential for anticipated to drop and so forth, so just trying to plan ahead. Go ahead, Chuck.
And item five is to reimbursement of healthcare membership not to exceed $325.89 according to provision 37 of the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll so move on Fire Five. Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's going to take us to the road department. I'm going to turn over, Mr. Icado.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is to amend Resolution 14-126 passed on March 11th for the 2014 purchase and installation of two 2015 Snow Ice Control Packages from the Gudhill. The problem was everything was under state purchasing except the equipment for the wedding system, the pre-wedding system. We had amended resolution. The cost did not change. It was already, that cost was already always there. We just had amended resolution.
I will so move on Road Number One.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution authorized to purchase a snowplow weight from Heaven Supply not to exceed $3,480.
So move. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number three is informational. This Friday, September 26th, the sheriff's office is again having another OBI checkpoint. We'll be on Wipole again in front of the Wipole Dell Center from 6:00 to around 7:30, I believe. And we're heading back down to Middle Branch, South Village Station Two in both directions. They're going to be doing it this time. So we'll be down there for a longer period, going to Sergeant Purdue. Very welcome to join us.
Want to run a pursuit of ours? That's really excellent.
I need to.
Yeah.
Interesting stories.
Pretty well planned the way they do it. Really well oriented.
Close out the road. It's going to take the zoning department. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Mr. Hawes. Item number one, we have eight users available for you this evening. All are for grass except one that is none involved in the truck.
I'm going to move on zoning 1A through H.
Second.
Discussion. Danny, just wanted to clarify, are any of these recurring? Recurring?
Five are new. Three are of a lot that were part of the new. I have four program that are in, a couple of residents process have changed over.
We knew that was a potential to clarify until I got transferred.
Other special? Just now that you just brought up your property, these occurrence, let me ask you, Danny, and fellow board members, if we've had already residents who've called in the past in the same home, and now it's the third time that we're going back to, and I'm asking you guys, do we need, should we send Danny out if we've had, we know that there's been a house that's just been really a burden to the neighbors without Danny having to wait for the phone call again? Shouldn't he go out since we've had that call and since it's been a burden, since they've showed up at a meeting, since they've made the phone call, since we went through the procedure? Do we need to have a phone call again and wait for the grass to be 12 inches high? Or should Danny just take into consideration that they have a priority list and say, "We've already had complaints here, 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 and here. We've already had people, you know, we went through the procedure. We need to just repeatedly go back and do them again?" Or was that getting too far ahead?
There are several that I routinely, there are a lot of properties that I do routinely monitor, but they don't just, just for this type of purpose.
I mean, like, would you, would you guys have like a list in your offices deep that was a big star? Like, these were, these were thorn in the side to residents and they're repeatedly coming forward again? And then, in other words, it would almost be a sin to wait for the grass? And I'm not saying to do this, but I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead of the other two more. But till, till a lot would be like a slap in the face. They went through the whole procedure, calling maybe a trustee, calling your office, going through the procedure, and then we wait for it to get 12 inches again. And we'll say, "Well, we'll go back out now that you've made the complaint again." And I'm just saying, I wonder if that's more of a slap in the face to a resident since they've already went through the procedure? So that's why I bring it up to you.
Well, again, you know, we, there are, I don't know what to call it, a priority list. But I have, I have a list of properties that I routinely go by and monitor to make certain that they are in process. And if, if they're getting close, we start to monitor the process and get them ready to come. The ones, the one that moved in the Ohio former ones, and they've been down and then they just kind of popped up here again this summer. And we, we do have a list and we routinely go by. The Star Fire Station is again.
Right.
That's a couple places like that. A couple of residences that, they're abandoned homes and we kind of routinely drive by and make certain they're pending in there, whether or not a property maintenance firm has picked up. Several of those have done that this year, which is grateful to see. We do have a list that we try to monitor.
Does that information get entered into like a cell or something for reporting? Reporting system to where we can simply say, okay, yeah, we know this year we've had three from that system. Not last year, we had four. We had four to where even over not just the current year, where over, say, a year or two prior, we may know.
Yeah, we've got. Well, we have yearly reporting system. We probably go back and double check. Basically, we, it's a desperate area, doing a lot of this based on memory. I suppose we should probably go back to the reporting system and find one that had.
So you just practice your like a cell or something?
Anybody we've done more than once ought to make that list. And I would think if that's what you guys are going for, anybody that we've gone back to more than once in a summer ought to be generated on that list just to be watched if nothing else, because they do get gone quickly. And that's an easy enough computer, you know, input on an Excel spreadsheet or something like that.
Excel, address, and then make the dates of the occurrences and then you do it.
Right. Once we get to a weekend vendor in one summer, we know there's something going on. It's either vacant or it's not being taken care of.
I think it's a strong, good respect to a resident who made the call because like, again, my personal opinion, it's like a slap in the face. We went through the whole procedure. We have our strict rules. What we do, we allow to get 12 inches high.
Right.
Then I already asked you guys to do this, and now you're going to do it again. It's like a slap in the face. So I give it just a matter of respect.
Sure.
Something will be done through Excel or whatever. Roll. Do we need roll calls still on here?
Yes.
Sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two, we have 13 payments for our crew's work.
I will so move on zoning 2A through M.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thank you, David.
That'll take us to parts department and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steiber.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution for the sale of scrap metal not to exceed $2,500. It's in one of our storage areas and just time to, no unintended scrap, and get rid of it to just create a little more room as we get ready for winter.
I'll so move. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Gentlemen, item two is a resolution to amend the field reservation fees for tournaments only for both ball fields and sports fields for 2015.
Second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis? Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to have some survey services provided for the township to create kind of the track record. We need to start soliciting grants and funds and projects to be done over there for Phase Two. The resolution is not to exceed $3,350.
I'll so move. Discussion.
Who's on this?
Mr. Gevasis second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Finally, just wanted to remind folks, Monday, September 29th is the last day of the season for the Supper Market over at Schneider Community Park. We've had significantly increased attendance each and every week, and the trucks have done a great job and people are really wrapping their arms around the event. So come out from 4:30 to 7:30 at Schneider Community Park and enjoy some of that food. Also, October 11th will be our PCS Fest in collaboration with Stark and Canton Parks. Our park is obviously in Schneider Park, with partners such as the fire department, North Canton YMCA, a couple of food vendors, and a couple of craft vendors along the way. How's the food? The Supper Market? Yeah, actually two or three. That's good. It's good selection. It's good sushi. Yeah. It's reasonable.
Nice.
So.
Next year, we're done. What did Rob, what did the one, the truck?
So I've been working in collaboration with a gentleman that's organized this before. He actually owns the orange truck. And we're looking at May through September of next year, maybe every other Monday. So we have the ability to kind of vary the menu, the trucks, et cetera. And then maybe once a month, kind of look like a food truck Friday night over at Schneider Park and kind of blow it out with some entertainment and some music, I think to that nature, so that we can continue to offer amenities to the township.
And it is very affordable. Rob had students from the band after practice walk over. I mean, it's, it's less expensive to go there than a fast food restaurant and you're getting freshly cooked food, so.
It's a quality meal for zero to $10 for a plate. So don't get me wrong, even though I am going to Fat Cam, there are plenty of desserts for those who aren't as restricted as I am. So feel free if you're looking for something. I'm sure there's.
The donuts were so good, I bought them and then gave them to one of our season halls because I knew I couldn't eat them. But they just smell so good and I thought I'd just smell them.
Just so you guys know, I bought them and I keep the whole thing.
You're able to, so.
I am too.
We got confession.
We'll meet up next year.
We've got confession.
Feel free to disclose all their doubts.
Thanks, Rob. Nothing under the law director. It's going to take us to communications. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one, I'm extremely proud of as the administrator. I know that the board will be too. It's a letter from Deborah Garrett from Pathway Caring for Children. And the letter reads, and you see the pictures, "Dear Rob, Jeff, Sean, and Terry, thank you for volunteering at Pathway caring for children during the United Ways Day of Caring last week. As a volunteer, you were able to complete many of the projects at Pathway's Jim Bridges Learning Center. The Jim Bridges Learning Center is for youth that are seen to be aged out or emancipated from foster care. This home gives them hands-on experience in learning how to navigate living on their own. It will be their hub or a place where they can always come back, feel cared for and loved. Your time spent volunteering helped make improvements to the home and most importantly, will give Pathway teens a greater sense of pride in their learning center. Pathway's mission is to empower children and families to realize their potential and achieve the possibility of their lives through innovative mental health, foster care, and adoptive services. Thank you for supporting us in your effort." And that's from Deborah Garrett. And you can see the pictures of the guys as they spent the day volunteering for the United Way Day of Caring, but specifically at Pathway.
Thanks. I think the guys got as much out of it as Pathway did since it's a worthwhile endeavor.
And I've heard the guys also say it was an eye-opener for them. The next item, number two, is from the Stark County Board of Elections cordially inviting the board and anybody else who would like to attend to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new location at 3525 Regent Avenue Northeast, Canton, Ohio 44705. That's on Monday, October 6th, 2014, from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M. So for the board and fiscal officer, I think it would be great if you would be able to attend. I've heard from even people who just work there, what a huge improvement it is. Initially, how they were nervous about to move, but what a great improvement it is. So again, Monday, October 6th, from 5:00 to 7:00 there. And that's at a communication.
So hopefully that old building gets on the demo program.
Yeah.
That's going to take us to the portion of meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody in the crowd that wishes to specifically address the board on any township-related business matters, we ask to just state your name and address for the record. There is a three-minute per individual on public speaks. Is there anybody that wishes to address the board? Come ahead, Dan.
I'm Sandy Sheets. I spoke with Detective Konik a couple of weeks ago.
What's your address, ma'am?
Oh, 6939 Hill Bridge.
Thank you.
And it's regarding four-wheelers and dirt bikes next door to me and behind me that run from 11:00 A.M. during the summer till dark. I've had the sheriff out a couple of times. They shut it down as soon as he's out of sight. They put it right back on. I didn't want to call the sheriff back because I didn't, I just didn't want to bug him. But we've had to get our property surveyed to keep them off of our property. They made a gorge, my husband said, 12-foot, about 45-foot long, five-foot wide, and about 18 inches deep from running these motorcycles. This is the second year we've put up with it. And I have just, they come, they come up, they turn around, they don't go on the other side of the property, I think. Maybe an older couple has called and reported them for that. And they're just up and down and up and down. We can't even use our backyard for a cookout. We don't even sit out back anymore. We have to sit out front. And we've tried to talk to the kids and, you know, kids don't want to hear it. It's a combative mother and grandmother. They don't want to hear it. And I've talked to a couple deputies. They came out. They went over and told the kid he needed a muffler. Well, he hasn't gotten a muffler. This is tomorrow, it would be the first silent week we have had without motorcycles. So he might have put the fear of God in them. I don't know. If it isn't, the attorney apparently for Plain Township said it wasn't a nuisance, that they have a right to use their property. Is it?
I'm the attorney for the township. I've never said those words, but.
That's what a deputy said to me.
Okay.
And I want to know what the difference between a nuisance is and what disturbing the peace is.
Well, nuisance is defined in our zoning.
And I have, I have your nuisance and I have that off the internet.
Okay. That's what that is defined in our zoning regulations. What was the other?
Disturbing the peace.
I can promise you that Detective Konik can speak much more eloquently to a disturbing the peace violation than I can.
I think it goes back to the noise ordinance as we talked about on the phone. I think the bikes and the ATVs are going to fall under that. So. With a certain distance. You know, I think if it's, if it's creating a disturbance to you and it's in a prolonged period of time, it's like we talked about on the phone. That initial call is great. It makes us aware of what's going on. But it's the follow-up call. If it continues, if it starts back up after we've gone out and issued them a warning and told them to keep it down. If, if an hour or a half an hour later, they start back up and it's continuous and long and annoying, then, then we have to get that follow-up call.
Right. And I told you I didn't want to call because I didn't want to be that person. But I am that person. And when they're zipping up and down, my whole house shakes. So that's just what.
How many acres is it?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
How many acres is it?
No, it's in an allotment.
This is an allotment?
It's in Laurel Ridge. There's 12 houses. They have, they have trails. They have ramps.
And is it their yard though?
Yeah, they're, we got our property surveyed so they would get off of our property. They're not in the street. They're not after dark. It's just all day.
You say you've had a week without it?
Since the deputy came out last Wednesday.
Okay. So that seems to have at least done something maybe.
It's done something.
Your concern is this is going to start up again?
Well, I'm sure it will.
Yeah.
I'm sure it will.
Well, it's not a nuisance. A nuisance is for zoning.
Well, it's not a nuisance. A nuisance is for zoning. It's not a nuisance.
Does it violate the noise ordinance?
It's hard to say. I mean, if it's during daylight hours and it's.
House control and reason? I don't know how you're gonna, I thought you had them on trespassing when you talked about the gorge, but that's in their.
Yes, that's in their, on their property.
Yeah.
But what rights do we as homeowners have out there, you know?
It's on their property. Oh, man.
Because they can't ride in the streets. They're meant to be ridden on your property.
Why can't they design these things to make them muffler-free or something?
Yeah.
How do these things so easily?
And if it's not, like I had talked with Eric about, it's not like 5:00 in the morning or, you know, 1:00 at night.
The problem that I, that I can see that in your situation isn't so much a time thing as a duration issue.
It's duration.
It's making it hard for you to enjoy your peaceful enjoyment of your property. So you have those competing interests and and that's a legit, obviously, that's a legitimate concern. So I mean, one of the things that's going to be tough is to prove and prosecute that duration issue because if we're going to call it unreasonable, it can't just be that they're operating them. Because they're within the law to operate those. But if they operate on, like you're saying, from let's say 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night, certainly, I think we quantify that as unreasonable.
Absolutely.
That could be, they're off from morning till night.
Oh, yes.
That could be the catch right there.
It could.
But it's not in that they're not in the dark.
It's not like Mr. Smith's in his yard, rolling his yard with a big old model lawn when he's done it two hours and it's over. Because we've all been there before.
Yeah, when we get it done.
I don't want to hear, sometimes I'm relaxing outside reading a paper. I'm like, I hear the big lawn, but I know an hour and a half is done. So I can put up with that. In your case.
But this is an all-day event.
Yeah, I think that's clear.
I think we have a.
There's going to be an issue of proving that and being able to document that and one of the things that we're going to have to do is it's going to require follow-up calls on your part. You can make that first call. I understand you want to be a good neighbor and believe me, we wish we could legislate everybody to be a good neighbor.
Exactly.
Doesn't always work that way. But it's going to require the follow-up call. Look, this has been going on for this long. This has been, it may even require a little help through an affidavit or testimony from you to prove that.
Absolutely.
I've heard this from 10:00 a.m. till 7:30 p.m. and it never stopped, et cetera, et cetera.
We can't even pursue it through that. I mean, is there anything through like community mediation?
That's a good idea as well.
A difference between residents, but I mean, that requires.
Takes two, yeah, two willing parties.
The deputy suggested that.
Yeah, and it's great when two people want to do it.
Well, I don't think they want to.
Yeah.
And if her husband were still alive, it wouldn't be going on.
You know, maybe hopefully, just with good communication, there might be a happy medium where they'll only do a couple hours, a few hours a day, then out of respect to you, shut down. Maybe they'll do that. I don't.
Let's start with seeing if it starts up or not, maybe cross our fingers.
Well, that's what we're doing.
And if it does, make sure that you make the call.
Yes.
And then let's try to get a sense from the deputy's perspective as to just how long this is going on. If one visit from a deputy was able to hold it off for a week, maybe that second visit might do even more. I mean, if they know we're not going away.
Well, it was, I was very impressed. I called. Within 10 minutes, they were there.
Yeah, they were best.
And, and it was SUV with two deputies and a cruiser with one. And I think it might have scared the heck out of me.
Well, there's something.
Which was really good too. But they were very nice and I, and he went over and he said, you know, started up for me. Well, it was out of gas. Lucky for him. He couldn't hear how loud it was, but he knows motorcycles and he said, this needs a muffler on it.
Okay.
So put a muffler on it and if it's still loud, I'm still going to call.
That's right.
And I, but I mean, I've made three calls in two years, so I don't think I'm being unreasonable.
You're not.
No.
Absolutely not.
So I did, this was what the deputy told me to do, to come to the township.
Yeah.
This is good because it's a matter of, matter of public record.
Record, yes.
On record through the sheriff, through the sheriff's office.
And we've spoken back and forth last week.
Right, right, a couple of times.
This is kind of what we went over.
Our deputies will, you know, they'll all be aware. In other words, if the call comes and a different deputy goes out, you, it's already shared, right, in your.
It gets passed down.
The call, the hey, this is a bit of a delay. Ron, get ready. You might be getting the call.
Detective Koenig, you all explained that we're looking at not the noise, but the duration of the noise, which is different than how we usually do it.
We can pass that along, yes.
Yes.
Now, let me say something.
Absolutely.
When you would call in, we have a CAD system and every time you would call or your address comes up, it would show and we can actually make notes in there. Exactly what it's for and what it's about. So regardless, whoever got the call, it would say, you know, you called such and such address. We've been out here 25 times for the same complaint. Here's all the case numbers. So everything is like individualized, if that makes sense. So and like what the board and what Deputy Koenig was saying is 100% right. Something like this needs a lot of documentation. If, you know, if we would pursue that issue, we need to document.
I was fearful and I told Detective I was fearful of calling and calling and being the old lady with the kid with the motorcycle next door. And if I do need a deputy, I didn't want somebody to be blown off. You know, that was my, the main fear.
Sandy, Sandy, that's not how these guys operate.
Okay. Well, I found that out. It's been wonderful. They've really done a good job.
Sandy, that's what you pay taxes for, is for the sheriff's deputies. They're dedicated to the township, so if there's an issue, call.
Okay, okay. Thanks a lot. Thanks for being so receptive.
Is there anybody else, for the sake of public speaks, state your name and address for the record in three minutes? It never lasts three minutes. It's going to last three minutes. My name is Bill Lee from 1900 Wilbley Avenue, B, in Ohio. We kind of need to know where we stand on everything. I know that the court thing was handed down on the 26th of last month. What's going to happen now? And the reason I ask is because we got a foul smell we could soak up from there, like a really bad moldy smell. This is horrible. And so I called Health Department and I said, check this out. Well, they said they didn't find any mold, but that there was a, that the box truck that's supposed to be removed from the property was full of moldy clothes, clothes that had gotten wet, anything like that, and that was in there. So we need to sort of know where we stand, what's going to happen, because this is eight weeks now we've been going here. So we kind of need to know where we stand. We had two customers come in this past week and loved everything except the mess next door. We lost two more weddings.
The court order is due on the 30th of this month, the removal of ten of the trucks.
And in that order, it does say, and it's something I'm going to have to talk to my client about, how we're going to approach it, that we're able to do self-help. I mean, she, you know, the court has said that, so it may be that we end up having to remove the unlicensed, inoperable vehicle and the storage unit ourselves. Obviously, that incurs an expense and who knows what the claim is going to be about what's in that storage unit, so we'll have to talk about that if it's not, if it's not off of there. That's where we stand.
Evidently, the Health Department said something, well, the Fire Department was there and that was enough. The Fire Department, I don't know if it was Troy, but somebody went there and said that there weren't big enough aisles in the house. It was, you know, it was a hazard. So she started moving stuff out, but now she's told us yesterday that the Health Department told her that she had to empty the entire building, which was packed to the gills of garbage and junk. All that's rolling out into the parking lot now as well. So the, and she, every day she brings more van loads and truck loads of stuff onto the property from God knows where.
I would just like clarification.
Health Department.
Ma'am, you need to state your name and address for the record. Laurel Moore Johnson, 1900 Wilbley Avenue, B. I would just like clarification as to what was she told because she stopped me yesterday and she said the Health Department told her she had to take everything out of that building that did not pertain to the hearing aid business and she was putting it on the parking lot. Everything is coming out of the house, onto the parking lot, and she's bringing more stuff in by van and her car. I'm going to lose my shirt.
It's every day, every day. Well, what she, I know what she does on Thursday. She drives her van around and picks up stuff along the curb that people put out for the trash management. She brings it home. It's her, and the biggest thing, as you know, I know she was going to apply for that varied permit to sell stuff, that temporary thing. But the woman has, you know, we talked about cleaning up the property, but she's only been helping one day in the last 30 days to even sell anything. Danny, for the sake of this matter, because it was the Health Department that rendered that, that did not come from us, can you follow with that?
I was unaware of that.
So were we until you asked. That's nothing we can speak to. Their decisions are.
I know.
You can follow with them by Thursday or Friday. So some time for the Health Department to give you an answer should we have to. I guess the biggest concern is that the storage container is gone, the box truck is gone, and she can't put the junk in the building. Are we going to have the junk blowing all over the parking lots all winter?
Well, if it's loose and rolling around and stuff is blowing into your property, then certainly we'll we'll have to do something about that because she can't just set it out there and let it be loose and let it go wherever it goes.
I mean, let's be reasonable here. If this was in Glenmore, nobody would put up with this crap. If this was in Bobbling, if this was anywhere. Yeah, but there's also other elements. It seems like what we are. There's also other elements that come into play from homeowners associations, residential rushes, business. You've got Health Department here versus zoning, so I mean, this can't all be just lumped in specific.
I don't disagree with that one, Ben.
And we don't know, we don't know what to do. We don't know how to address it. That's why we're asking you. What do we do next? What are you doing?
Well, you know what we're doing.
We're on top of this because you were here two weeks ago. We told you it's going to take a month, so you're a little ahead of yourself. You got to give us some time to let us do our job. I don't mean to really disrespect, but you were here two weeks ago and we told you that we have this court order that's going to take 30 days. And you just heard our attorney say that we may have to go in-house and put our bodies on that property to execute that nuisance, where we're physically now doing it. But you got to give us time to do our job because we can't get ahead of ourselves or now we're disrupting the law. So we're, we're right on with that.
I understand what you're saying. You're talking about a container and a truck and you're not talking about all the debris that's all over the place. Yeah, but that's, that's your. Where are we going? That's based upon. Where are we going? That's based upon speculative comments is what I'm taking that as. That's not something that has occurred. So until that, until that occurs. No, I mean, the stuff that's already sitting there has been there for three months. All over the property, all over. I call it debris.
Well, and that's the thing.
Something else may be valuable things.
Right, and that's the thing. We do have competing interests on that front. When you say debris, if it's truly debris, then we can abate that as a nuisance, but what you're talking about now is starting a new process. And that darn constitution and all that due process stuff, that's what takes the time, so.
Although we've been complaining about all this stuff sitting around for more than two, three years.
Hold on, you and I, let's, no, we're not starting over. Let's be factual here. You and I had a conversation at the last meeting.
Yes.
And one of the things I told you was all those things under tarp that are secured are likely not going to be removed, that it was going to be the box truck and it was going to be the the inoperable vehicle, I'll call it. Now, tonight, I hear about debris. Well, that's a new complaint.
Well, it's the new stuff coming out of the house now.
And when it comes out of the house and it comes onto the property, that starts a new complaint. So are we starting over? Yes, but we're starting over based on a new complaint. So if that truly is debris, it'll be abated, but it has to go through the process.
Are you saying that the other stuff that she feels is valuable? Nothing can be done about getting that stuff?
Not until we change our zoning, like I told you last time.
So we're looking at next, Brian?
Yes. On the tarped up stuff, things that are put up. And that's exactly what I told you last meeting. That shouldn't come as a surprise to you today.
Well, no, the surprise is the fact that we're losing business every week.
Well, that's not a surprise to you either, with all due respect, sir.
I mean, I'm losing a lot, a lot.
I understand that.
If you were in my place, you'd be upset as hell.
There's no question. And don't take, don't take my legalistic argument as not being sympathetic to your plight.
I'm not. I'm just so concerned that if it goes through the winter like this, that it's going to kill us.
I can tell you this. I have permission from my board to begin changing that part of the zoning. So that will be addressed.
We're already working on it.
Yeah.
Yes, we can't give us some.
We appreciate it.
We're working on this. This is going to.
We're hurting more every day.
It's something that we have to go and make sure it's legally done. Danny's very precise. He's going to make sure it's done correctly or else he gets in trouble. So we don't want to get in trouble, but we have to do the process that it takes to do this. And we're sorry, sometimes it takes a little longer, but we got to make sure we're covering ourselves too. If we get a hand do something illegal, we're in trouble. We don't want to get in trouble.
I understand. I just need a clarification because she's telling me you guys told her she had to clear the house out and it's all over the parking lot now.
She told us. Us or the Health Department? She's telling us.
She's telling us that the Health Department and zoning told her all this stuff had come out of her house, anything that was not part of her hearing aid.
We would never address the inside of the house. Fire would, we would not. And so that didn't come from us. And I think once we talk to the Health Department, we'll see what the facts are.
As you know, we might be far wrong.
That's right. That's right.
All right. We appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Do we have, do we have anybody else that wishes to address the board regarding any township-specific business matters? Okay, that concludes public speaks. It takes us to Concerns of Trustees, handed by either my fellow board members. Thank you. Okay. Concerns of the Fist Walks, if you would request? No, Mr. Hawes. It takes us to Approval Miss for September 9th, 2014, which I will so move. Second, discussion, roll call.
Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, so being here by the tall, mighty Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, adjourned to executive session at 6:44 p.m. of this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code 121-22G for the purpose and consideration of one-half compensation of a public employer official.
I'll second it.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.